But I think we came through at the last minute. And it looks like Michaela is having some audio challenges. So we're up to 11 participants. Okay. Melissa. Melissa is on here twice, that's why. We have Chris Pearson, Jim, John, Karen, Cody, Summer, and Lisa, so we're definitely. And oh, and we have Cassie. Cassie is here to answer any questions that we might have. Thank you, Cassie. Folks, if you're just joining us, we'll get started here shortly. Looks like Michaela is having some audio challenges. So give us another minute to work that out.
Can you guys hear us now in council chambers? Great. Excellent, sorry about that. We're figuring it out. So with that, yeah, you were correct, Lisa, we do have a forum, so you can get started when you're ready. You are muted.
Thanks, Michaela. I was saying, welcome, everyone. This is a special meeting that the NLA has called to discuss home energy scores. We wanted to perhaps consider sending in something and writing to council to weigh in with any particular requests or suggestions around the home energy score audit. So that's why we called the special meeting. It looks like we do have a forum. Michaela, would you be able to help me out? I don't have the list in front of me. Can we do a roll call?
Yeah, no problem. And I will start it now, and you should all be able to do it yourself. Chris, you do not need to. You can just say here when I call your name. No, you don't need to do anything. Lisa Musso. Yes, John Bennett.
Here.
Aaron Bergsick.
Here.
Cody Campbell.
Here.
Jim Cristo. Dina is excused. Chris Fries.
Here.
Matt Mara. Not seeing Shannon. Chris Pearson. Here. Elizabeth Rhodes. Excuse, sorry about that. Summer Sears.
Here.
And Ross, it looks like you could join us.
Just for about 15 minutes at this point, but yeah.
So do we have seven? Yeah.
Yeah, this is Jim, I am here, I was double muted.
Okay, so yeah, we have eight. So when Ross leaves us in about 15 minutes, we have to have all of you stay on in order to continue the meeting. So just pointing that out, no one can drop off, or else we can't vote.
Okay, thank you, Michaela. So I just want to point out, even with eight, so eight out of 13, that represents roughly two thirds of the group. And if, if we are considering any kind of of action or communication, we just need to keep that in mind with our communication submission. If we end up voting on something, and let's say that it is a split vote, very, maybe it's four-four, or even, you know, five-three, does that actually represent NLA concerns? I just want to put that on the table so that we're mindful of it. We don't have to do anything with it right now, but we may end up having a discussion. With that, I think we want to kind of move into the home energy score information. I know that Jim Cristo, Southeast Bend, had submitted information. I think we also received information from River West and from Southern Crossing. And it seems like one of the general concerns around the home energy score is related to the mandatory versus voluntary nature. So I guess I just want to start the conversation with that. Anybody want to chat?
Yeah, this is Ross, I had similar concerns, and we discussed a little bit with the board as well. Putting the onus, the responsibility on the homeowner who's trying to list their home is where we kind of felt like it was, didn't quite, didn't quite meet the need, or wasn't necessarily appropriate. And if some ideas we bounced around, one that I had was target older houses, and have the city basically manage it, potentially look at when codes were updated fairly drastically at the city. So like, maybe make it mandatory for homes prior to 2000, those built after the year 2000, something along those lines, to try to drive up the efficiency of those older homes that were built 70s, pre-70s, 80s, that type of a thing. That's probably, I don't know if it's, if we want to call it lower hanging fruit, but certainly probably the bulk of the problem with respect to greenhouse gas emissions from residences around Bend.
Something I find interesting about that is that I believe Karen, Southern Crossing, submitted something almost contradictory. In a sense, you were worried about the older houses being held to the same standard as the newer ones, is that right? Do you want to talk on your thoughts?
Well, our thoughts were that older homes are typically held by people that are lower income, and that we were concerned that they don't have the ability to pay, and that the city should have programs that help that, help them. So ours wasn't really age-related to the house, it was more income-related. We also thought it should be voluntary, and that it should be educational, and that it should also be free. And make it a tool that's widely available. For those of you that didn't have time to read the comments that I turned in.
I have a question about the pricing. I saw the estimate was $150 to $300 is how much it might cost. Does anyone have any reason to believe that that's inaccurate, way too low? That it might cost people a lot more? Because that price, to me, seems fairly reasonable in the grand scheme of all the money we're talking about in a home sale in Bend.
I know we have Cassie here, too. So Cassie, if you wanted to confirm the price range for those.
Yeah, hi, everyone, this is Cassie Lacy from the city manager's office. And yes, that is the price range that we're anticipating. I've had that number verified by some local inspectors who have recently completed the assessment training process and are intending to offer the assessments. And I'll also add that we did write into the ordinance, kind of like a clause that says that the price is something that the city will be monitoring, and if the price ends up being dramatically outside of the range of what we expect, that we would like, you know, we would evaluate that, and that we would, depending on the situation, you know, it's something that we would flag and potentially intervene if we felt like it was necessary. With the caveat being that that price range will vary based on the size of the home. So that $150 to $300 is kind of for a 2,000 square foot home on average. And so if you have a really large home, it may be on the higher end, like 500. But a smaller, probably cheaper as well, so.
So I also want to point out that this service is actually available from some of the vendors here in Bend, free of charge. So you can actually get a home energy audit. You can see what's going on with your house, and you can get quotes for what it might cost to upgrade some of the energy efficiency items in your house for free of charge. The only issue is if you're just doing it to evaluate your home, you're not necessarily getting that home energy score, which is what is needed for for this program in order to sell the house. So just want to point that out.
We're pretty comfortable in Old Bend neighborhood that home prices will stay high. But as far as.
It looks like you tend to the mic towards you. Now try again.
And I'm from Old Bend neighborhood, we have every expectation that home prices will hold up and remain high. As far as an energy score, I've got no idea how many homes are insulated and how many are not. The main point I really wanted to make is many of our homes have been before the Landmarks Commission, which tends to oppose double-pane windows. And I can't help but believe that will be harmful to our neighborhood.
I'd like to call on Jim Cristo. Jim, you and Southeast Bend submitted a letter, and I thought it was very well crafted. Can you summarize for the group some of your position?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. One of the positions we had was something that's been mentioned already, and that is the, some of the older homes that have been built to the code that existed at that time, and now they're faced with this home energy score, which may, you know, if it's very expensive for them to upgrade those homes based on the construction used at the time, that may be a penalty to these kind of folks. And it may have nothing to do with income, but it may have to do with some of the retirees that lived on fixed incomes. Or I would say low income. So that was one of the concerns. Another concern is that we want to make sure that the home inspectors, or the home assessors, are not using this to generate business for themselves. In other words, there could be a bias in there that, you know, these assessors say, well, your home energy score, and for several thousand dollars, we'll fix it. There should be a clear delineation between the home assessors and contractors who, you know, can do the work. So that was one of our other concerns. And a third concern is something I raised at the NLA meeting, I guess, last month. And that was, we're putting a lot of onus on the homeowner. And when you look at it, all the homeowner can do is request an assessment. That's all he has power to do. If assessors aren't available, or they don't respond, or they're, they're booked up for two months, that's beyond his control. And yet the city is going to hold his feet to the fire and say, hey, it's your problem, you got to get it done, or we're, you know, if we find you're in violation, we're going to fine you. So this strikes me as being very unfair. And so the suggestion I made last month was to have the city set up kind of a central scheduling facility, where the seller, all he has to do is go online and request an assessment. You know, and I think that's some certain advantages for the city, because they're going to know right away if the assessors aren't available, or they take too long to respond, or there's just not enough assessors, they'll have concrete evidence right away, rather than having to wait a couple of months downstream for their people, for the staff, to go, you know, on the listings, you know, listing by listing, and see who's not, has a home energy score. And when I mentioned that, I was asked, well, just bring it up to the council. And so that's what the Southeast Bend Neighborhood Association is doing. We actually submitted the letter today. It was approved by the board, and I sent copies to, actually, you all have copies of what we're sending. So that's basically the big topics that, you know, we raised. But I do have one question for Michaela. I noticed Wednesday night, there's an awful lot of topics on the agenda. Are they really going to get to this home energy score? That's what I'm wondering, thank you.
On count, for council's schedule tomorrow?
For council's schedule on Wednesday evening, starting at 6:30.
Yeah, I mean, Ian and Cassie would probably have a better idea, since they're boys.
The meetings tend to go as long as they need to go to get through the agenda, so. I mean, things can change, but council meetings will sometimes run quite late to get through everything. So I've seen a reason why they won't be able to get through the agenda on Wednesday.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. That was a really good overview. You actually brought to mind something for me is I have actually worked with clients where they decide to sell one week, and, you know, when they decide to sell, there's a whole lot of stuff that has to happen in order for that house to be ready to go to market. And this is going to be just one more thing that they have to accomplish. And then it's all going to come back to timing on whether or not they can get it accomplished. And then what happens if their house actually sells within maybe the day it goes to market, or the week that it goes to market? And maybe that home energy score hasn't been performed yet. There, for me, there's like, well, what if? Are we just doing this because we're trying to cross Ts and dot Is for the city? And what's actually going to happen? So many, so many home transactions, you know, a lot of people that are buying, especially older homes, they kind of walk into it with this idea that it's probably going to need a little bit of updating. It's probably going to need a little more insulation, or better windows, or something along those lines. And are we really accomplishing anything with this? I don't see it.
And I can comment on the scenario that you were suggesting there. So the idea is that the requirement is that you get the the score before listing. So ideally, you haven't listed your home before you have a score, but if somebody does list their home without the score, and it's like, okay, I'll just get the score, you know, and then the house does sell, because we do have that 15-day grace period also, before it's a code violation. So say the home or the score within that, or a sale within that 15-day grace period, we don't, the city doesn't really have a mechanism of going after and like penalizing that house for not having the score. So that is kind of a weakness in the enforcement, that there's not a whole lot we can do about that. So that is, that is how it would work in a situation like that, if someone failed to get one before the house was listed. Other markets, we have seen, like in Portland, and I know we're a different market than Portland, but just to put some perspective, they see, you know, similar contractor issues like we do in terms of it being difficult to get people in. But for the home energy scores, they are able to schedule same-day and next-day services. So we're, again, the length of time it takes to get a score, like the price, is another thing that we actually wrote a clause into the ordinance that said that's something that we are going to be monitoring. Because of course, if it's taking everyone over a month to get the scores, and that's not what we had anticipated, like when we're recommending the program, that's not what we were thinking, that would be another kind of trigger for us to be like, okay, we need to reevaluate this program. Because it's, definitely the last thing that the city wants is to create a bunch of these unintended consequences as well. But I understand, you know, the code still says what it says. And so to a certain extent, you know, you just have to take our intention for that. But those are the conversations we've had about it.
So Cassie, at this point, how many licensed inspectors do we have for home energy scores?
I'm not sure on today's number, because I have talked to a number. I've talked to a couple of inspectors who are, who were going to be going through the assessment. Before, before the last month or two, we've had zero to maybe one or two people who are licensed. But what other markets have seen is it's after the ordinance goes into, it's after the ordinance gets passed, that it triggers people like, oh, okay, now the ordinance is passed, there will be a ton of people that need the service. Now I have a reason to go get this extra license. So that's actually one of the weaknesses, one of the reasons that a voluntary program wasn't seen as plausible, is that in essence, a voluntary program exists today. Like, the home energy score exists, people can offer it as a service, people could get it if they wanted to. But today, or at least two months ago, it's a little different today. Two months ago, there wasn't anyone in Bend offering a home energy score, because the market does not, you know, provide that. So part of establishing the program is kind of establishing that market for it as well.
So my particular take on it is, I want to support energy efficiency, and I would love for us to get there sooner than later. I just don't think that we're ready for a mandatory program. I think that maybe if this were phased in, and it were voluntary for a period of time, with the idea of putting everybody on notice, that this is going to become mandatory, say, after six months or after a year, which gives our home inspectors the opportunity to get licensed and to get ready for this. But there seems to me it would be advantageous if we could provide a carrot or an incentive for homeowners to want to do this before they list their house. If you try to tie this with listing the house, I will guarantee you, it's going to be problematic. Listing a house has too many variables, it has too many things. You don't just decide to call up a Realtor one day and say, hey, I want to list my house, and it goes on the market the next day. It is, most often, it's about a two-week turnaround before that house is ready. By the time you get pictures, by the time you do any inspections, any repairs, anything, you've got to have some lead time.
Right, so just a couple of things to address that. For one, I think that idea that it does typically take a couple of weeks, many people know, you know, even several weeks to months in advance that they're going to list their home, that gives you the time to call the home energy assessor, and at the same time, you're doing the photos. A lot of people that are doing some of those, like a lot of people that do the photos for a home, that offer that as a service, are actually offering home energy score. So you do it along with those other things. So you're calling to get your photos done. So that's kind of the time period that I think we envision doing that. And then with respect to that delayed lead time, you're in luck, because the proposed program, as we have said all along, is actually that the program would begin at the soonest, January, or July 1st, 2023. And that's just for exactly what you have said, time for the assessors to get ready, time for the market to get ready, time for the city to do additional outreach and make sure everyone is aware of it. And then we also have built in that if before that July 1st date, it is found that we don't have enough assessors, it's significantly less than we expected, significantly less than we think that we need, that we would further delay implementation of the program. So we have heard from some other groups, like asking for a delayed implementation of an entire year. So that's something that, you know, I guess being a little bit more specific about what you're looking for that, and how it differs from what it already is out there, would be helpful. Because also, as I was kind of explaining, the voluntary program does exist today. So there would be nothing we could do different in a voluntary program that doesn't already exist today, other than perhaps advertising it a little bit more. So I think that we have captured at least some of what you suggested with the six-month delayed start. Because as of right now, it would be seven months from now.
Thank you, Cassie, I appreciate that. I'm not sure I'm on the same page with you in terms of trusting people that are taking photographs of the house to also do a home energy assessment. But that's a personal opinion. There might be people that are qualified to do that. But I want to open it up to the rest of the floor. If anyone has questions, or comments, or suggestions on how we might go forward, feel free to come forward.
I had a question. You said there's a voluntary program in effect now? I wasn't even aware of that. So if I'm not aware of that, how many people in the community are aware of it? What outreach has been done, and how many people have taken advantage of it?
Well, that's the thing, it's just a service that exists like any other service you may think of. You know, like the city doesn't advertise services that we don't have a direct tie into. And so one of the benefits of the city creating a program around it is to create some city structure. So like, the city doesn't advertise that you can get home energy scores currently, and no one offers the Department of Energy tool. There is no one that offers specifically that tool yet in Bend, because it's not something that people have been asking for yet. There's not a market yet for that in Bend, since that's not a requirement. So right now, like, someone could not, probably couldn't find someone to do it, because the people become available to do it once you have a mandatory program. So that's kind of the tricky part with the voluntary program, is that it's like a chicken and egg thing. So like, it just doesn't really, it doesn't really, the market doesn't pop up for it unless there's some sort of, you know, outside agency doing that. There are other types of home energy assessments that can be done, like Greensavers offers one that's much more comprehensive and thorough. Those ones are more expensive. So the city typically doesn't advertise for a private business that offers a private service. So that's, so there's a little bit of nuance to that, but anyway.
Just to add, just to add to that, Karen. So basically, if you want a home energy score as a homeowner today, you can get one. You can work with, Greensavers is one of the companies that I've worked with. And they came out to my home, and they completely tested my home. They did all kinds of blowing air, and trying to figure out where the cracks were, and where I needed additional insulation in my home. So you can get that, it's just not going to be an official document. It's going to be for your benefit, your personal benefit. That's where we're at today. That's what we mean by, it's voluntary. And then there's nothing that happens with that. It's between the vendor and the homeowner. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Cassie, I have seen a couple of comments related to the age of the house. Was that a factor that you guys talked about with the home energy score?
Well, we've heard both, like you kind of referred to, we've heard both. We've heard people who say it shouldn't apply to older homes, because there will be penalized more. And then we've also heard people say it shouldn't apply to newer homes, because they're the ones that aren't energy, you know, they're the ones that are more energy efficient. So it's something that's been discussed, like, yeah, it's possible that older homes may, on average, have a worse energy efficiency, because they're built to a less energy-efficient code. That's definitely something the committee has discussed, but just on net, they see the value in making sure that all homes have scores, and that if someone, if you're a buyer, who's going to buy one of those homes that happens to be less efficient, whether it's old or new, that's valuable information to have, and vice versa. And it is a little bit of a, it's not entirely accurate to say all old homes are inefficient, and all new homes are efficient either. So that's kind of something that we talk about. And also knowing that, and there are some instances where owners of older homes have made upgrades to, you know, they have made investments in energy efficiency. And so the home energy score allows those to be kind of daylighted in a way that is often invisible to people, so that people can look at that older home. And if someone's made improvements to the insulation, but not to their countertops, and another home has made improvements to their countertops, but not to their insulation, that that's something that, you know, people can look at and take into account, like which one would they rather, you know, invest their money into?
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're into about a half an hour discussion. At this point, does anyone feel strongly that we want to pull together a letter from the NLA? Do we have anyone that wants to put forward emotion, or some language that we should put forward? Any ideas?
Yeah, I'll jump in, this is Jim, and I would offer up our position, the seven position, as a starting point, if the NLA wants to move forward, because I think we've covered pretty much most of the items. There's one item I did forget, and that is. And that is an appeal process. Suppose a homeowner disagrees. Can two assessors disagree on a home energy score? And if so, how does the city plan to address that? Those one gives me a six and I say, well, I don't like that. I think I'm much better. I go to another one. He gives me a nine. I'm obviously going to submit the nine. So, thank you.
There's not, there's not really any subjectivity in the scorecard because what it is, is it's, it's a sheet of paper. I mean, they fill it up on a computer because it there's this backend tool and they type numbers in. So they take measurements in the home. So they look and they say, what type of insulation do they have? It's this R rating. They type that in. They say what it's all, it's basically all objective measurements. So for two people, for two assessors to get different scores, that would be a result of an assessor incorrectly measuring or lying, which of course can happen. There's only so much we can do about their, you know, like, that's just, we are hopeful that we don't have assessors out there that are like lying a bunch. Earth Advantage does do, they are hired by the Oregon Department of Energy to perform a statewide service of quality assurance. So they go and they do walkthroughs with the home energy assessors to make sure that they're scoring accurately and doing continuing education. So it's not really, it's not really subjective like that where one person could be like, your insulation, I think, is great. And someone's like, your insulation, I think, is not great because they put the the numbers in there and they're measuring with, you know, a measuring tape. And then this tool that was developed by the U S Department of Energy for years and years in modeling is the one actually doing the calculations and spinning out the number. So it would have to be very intentionally manipulated or gross negligence in order for someone to come up with a very different score.
Yeah, I have a question for Cassie. So we're talking about insulation a lot here. Can you break down a little more specifics of the exact things that this assessor is looking at? I assume there's insulation, the type of windows you have, if you have a wood stove, if you have a gas fireplace, can you kind of break down the specifics, like what is getting evaluated in each home?
Yeah. And while I'm answering, this might be impossible for me to try to do at the same time. I actually have a form from someone that got one done. But it's basically like things like insulation and the envelope and the construction style, like what is your, what is your house actually made out of? What type of slab is it on? And then, so there's a bunch related to that. What type of windows do you have? How many windows do you have? The size of the windows, that sort of thing. And then, and then your mechanical system. So your heating, cooling and and your hot water. So that's the short answer. And I do have that scorecard. I have that sheet that I'll keep trying to look for to see if I can find it. But it's all things that fall within that realm.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'd be curious, like, if an older traditional wooden stick house compared to like a newer composite wood material, like how great of a difference that makes, like, you know, how how big of a difference does the material make that the house is made out of as opposed to like how much insulation is in the attic, you know, that type of stuff? I'm just curious about.
Yeah, exactly. And those things here, I found it, I can pull it up. Those things are both accounted for the actual, the actual, like, how those things compare to each other. I don't know, because that's all the work that's been done in the tool. So you have like air tightness and the the blower door test is not included as part of it. But I think if you have results from a recent blower door test, you can factor that in. So it's the roof construct, roof construction, exterior finish, insulation level, roof color, attic or ceiling type, attic insulation, more of that, and then foundations, the type of slab you have, insulation in the foundation. And then walls, if it's a townhouse or duplex, if there's other units on either side of you, those tend to be more efficient because obviously you have more heated space there and everything. So this is what they use, basically. Skylights, windows, wall characteristics, construction exterior finish, window characteristics, heating systems, cooling systems, duct systems. Oh, yeah, like the placement of your ducts makes a big difference.
Okay. All right. So I wanted to remind everyone to that if we don't have a majority agreement, which from what I'm seeing, it sounds like one or two people agree that it shouldn't be voluntary and or groups or neighborhood associations agree it shouldn't be voluntary. One or two are concerned about the age of being a factor and bias. So like, we've heard a little bit of scattering from everything. I think what I would remind you all is that you can still submit letters from your neighborhood association as well. Statement. But I would be curious if anyone is wants to respond to Jim putting forward the Southeast Bend letter at this point. I think my concern is I'm not hearing much of a consensus. And so writing a a letter based on a position, I'm not sure if that's something that you want to move forward with or not. So if anybody feels strongly now, I guess, would be the opportunity to make a motion or ask for action.
I mean, I'm not quite ready to support that letter. I'd have to reread it. When I presented this at our last board meeting, you know, one board member who's a Realtor immediately said, no, I don't like this. This is going to muddle up the the home buying and selling process. And you know, I personally was like, well, I kind of like it. Anything that, you know, is is promoting energy efficient. See, I'm all for. So we're like split and nobody else gave opinions from my board. So I'm not really ready to jump on board with anybody else at the moment.
And I'd like another opportunity to read it, too.
So Michaela, I'm not hearing any strong themes among the group in consensus in one way or the other. While I might personally lean towards things that I've heard and read with Jim's letter, I thought that that was very well done. I I like the idea that this becomes a voluntary versus mandatory. And with due respect, Cassie, it's voluntary now, but it's not quite the same. And if people really, it what feels to me that this program's basically half baked. That it doesn't have everything figured out. And it feels to me like somebody thinks that it's better to do something rather than nothing. And without having everything figured that out. Maybe some people think that that's okay. But when it comes to government programs, I kind of like things figured out a little bit more. So I'm not on board with supporting the home energy score. And I have that support from people that I've talked to on my board. So we are are flat out not in favor of the council adopting this, but I don't feel that I have enough support among this group for that kind of statement. So with that, my proposal is that we all do individual N A letters.
This is Summer. I agree with Lisa and I'll make that motion that we not submit a letter from N L A, since we don't have much of a consensus and that we rely on the individual neighborhood associations to submit their feedback.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? If you, if you do, just speak up. I can't see people's raising their hands. I don't see anyone raising their hand. So any further discussion?
I'd like to get hand raised so we can report back to the rest of the committee.
Okay.
Is what I would say to the N L A not submitting a letter.
Okay, so all in favor, please raise your hand if you are in favor of the N L A not submitting a letter and you are in favor of N A's submitting their own individual letters.
Majority looks like.
Well, at least we have a majority there. Michaela, is there anything else that we need to accomplish tonight?
Not tonight. I think what I would remind everyone if we want to make an act to how we do majority rules with the N L A conversation. So if you want to rethink how we do that. So Lisa mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there's eight people here. Is that truly a majority? If if majority is only four or five people, is that a majority of the neighborhood associations? And I know Summer, you've had concerns about that in the past, too. So and that is something that you're you're welcome to bring up in rep reports as a topic for future consideration.
Great. Thank you, Michaela. With that, I think we are about to close the meeting. Just a reminder that the next N L A meeting is Tuesday, December thirteenth. I will not be there. Other people will be presiding. And hopefully we'll have a quorum for that meeting. Michaela, anything else?
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Hey, bye bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.